Sitting in the chair also function as a sergeant. I don't know if that entails much. Like an official councilor.
Uh, yeah. Actually, let's do it again.
I'll just tell them, get out. I'll be like, go get them. This time we'll call the meeting to order.
Father God and heaven, we just thank you tonight, and I thank you for our leaders. I especially pray for our community tonight and our schools. As we look towards the future, and I pray that you will just guide us and direct us and be with everyone here. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. My flag is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there changes to be made to the agenda?
We do have a few changes from when it was initially published on Friday. We have deleted the item in our discussion, the library will not be coming to speak. We did add two action items. So right after appropriation ordinance number 14, we've added a funding request for a portion of the dispatch console. And then right after ordinance 2021, 2180, we've added an amendment to the U.S. Cellular Water Tower agreement. I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing not all at their say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passed, moving out of proclamations, recognitions, USD 333 bond project and formal sales tax requests.
Good evening commissioners and members of our community. Thanks for this opportunity. It's been, what is it about a month since we talked last time? I do have a presentation and appreciate Chief Austin in our tech side tonight. Been on the phone with him a lot about daycare today, so we appreciate working with the city on that as well. Chief, if you wouldn't mind going to the black side of the lenses. I usually start a lot of my presentations with this is that we're all coming to this conversation from a wide variety of lenses, whether that be corporate executives, whether that be school administrators, whether that be counselors, whether that be contractors, and we all have different lenses through which we view things. And obviously with education, we have, you know, bringing 1,200 students into our buildings every day. There's a variety of lenses that they come with as well as their families. And I'll go to the next one. If you guys, I know you probably can't see that, and I've shared this with you before as a commission. I know there's some different commission members here, but education has drastically changed. As you can see, on the far left-hand side is that 1900 to 1910, and then I stopped at 2010. And as Ms. Hatch understands too, education is definitely different and drastically different than it was in 1929 to 1940 and beyond. So there's a long list of additions that we've had to that. So when we start talking about why this building may need to change, these are the reasons. We're not just teaching, you know, reading and writing and arithmetic and PE anymore. There's a lot of, a lot of pieces to that puzzle. And if you go to the next slide, you can see this is Skylar Hill's classroom. This is a picture that we've drawn in some of our archives, but this is the top floor of the high school. Still has the wood floor in it like you see there, but you know, I don't have the exact date of this picture and when it was taken. But I'm assuming somewhere around the 1940s, maybe even into the early 50s. But even education at that time, we were educating students in rows of chairs. And those really prepared our workforce for the jobs at the time, which is what you see here. Most of these factories that look like this in the 40s and the 50s do not look like this anymore. And so you can see if you go to the next slide, you know, our classrooms at the time, they have evolved. And so, or have they evolved? And I think the challenge with a lot of our conversations are what does that look like for a student? So you see this now, and our students are still in rows of chairs. And so we're trying to move away from that and do some project-based learning. We have a lot of different needs. We have some different demographics, and then we also have some students with some specialties that we're trying to work around. And so that has provided some different challenges. You look at the jobs at the time of the evolve, these are some pictures of Apple and Google that we don't have that necessarily in Concordia, Kansas. But what we do have in Concordia, Kansas is a lot of folks that work remotely now. And we learned that a lot from COVID, but also in the agricultural community, if you look at the jobs at the time, have they, you know, evolved? Now we have GPS on tractors and are making some amazing developments with genetically engineered plants and so forth. So there's, the farming world has, looks a lot different than what it did when I drove around the tractor in Western Kansas, round and round and round, and usually worked up wheat spittle. And so now we're no tilling and putting things directly in. This is a great image, and I think I've shared it with some of our community patrons. But this is a wonderful example of what's taking place in Kismet, Kansas, where they've actually put two different varieties of corn into the same seed bank, into the same planter. The GPS is plugged it's saying, I'm not just doing this because I'm a K-State fan. I don't know, J-Hawk could be pretty tough to put in there. I wouldn't, I would argue that, but you know, this is a, when you look at this from the top, from a circle standpoint, from irrigated circle, the power cut that you have outlined is just a different variety of corn that has a different color of tassel. So the education that we're educating, even our farm students, our farm kids in, is vastly different. And even in my world where I'm at, a lot of, you know, a lot of the kids are helping their dads run tractors now, programming them and then programming the GPS. So our education has to develop, but it has to change. And it's not all to do with facilities, but it has a primary responsibility. So as we get to our next slide, jobs that didn't exist when our seniors started school. So this past year, we, in May, we walked, I think, 69 seniors across the stage. These jobs didn't exist when they were kindergartners at development, 665,000 jobs, cloud computing, data analytics, and then obviously drone operation, which has become very big even here in Concordia with some of the wind towers. Progress to our next slide, we spent a lot of time on facility planning, and you guys have seen in the media, we talked about survey data. If we were to approach our patrons at this point, what the data revealed to us at this point is a 51% yes on both questions, that would be the property tax component and the sales tax component with 35% no. And 14 didn't have enough information or they didn't know. That provides us, you can look at it two ways. One is glasses half full or glasses half empty. But with 51%, with a plus or minus 5% rate, you know, we can see that as high as 56% approval, or we could see that as low as, you know, 46 on that process. You could see the no rate is as high as 39 or, you know, as low as 30. So I think it's important that we understand that. And so our focus really is trying to educate the I don't knows to what that process is. But we feel very fortunate, you know, to have this data to kind of base what our plan, what our plan looks like, and what the work that the community facility team has put into this. And then if you move to the next slide, we talked about what we've done. And the crucial conversation for us as we present to our community is the conversation of what 11 years of study looks like. And we've had three different consultants, and this is just since I've been in Concordia. I started in 2011. Right when I came, we had a guy by the name of Jerry McCall in our district that did some studies in a wide variety of areas from, you know, building an attendance center of just 11 and 12 acres of my college. Looking in, one of the solutions was buying land near the college. Mrs. Hatch is probably part of that conversation, remember Jerry coming in? And a lot of those conversations evolved. We lost traction again. Obviously, the cost was great, millions and millions of dollars to do that component, and we lost traction. We moved forward then with another individual, Ebert Mayo Architects. Again, we came up with something near 75 to 80 million dollars to do some renovations and build on to the high school and do some work at the elementary and grade level configuration. We most recently came back and started working with McCollum Gordon and H2K Architects and formed a community facility planning team. We've had a number of town halls, we've exhibited, we've developed surveys and worked with folks on surveys. I got lots of coffee with lots of coffee groups. You know, we feel like this plan is meeting both the needs of the school and our community. We have a great partnership with the city. We utilize their ball fields and we help with scoreboards. But then, you know, in turn, you know, we allow city organizational groups to utilize our facilities, whether it be adult basketball leagues, adult volleyball leagues, co-ed volleyball leagues, those kind of things. So it's a great partnership, tennis courts, I'm working together with this on concrete projects to stretch our resources within our community as far as we possibly can, building great relationships with people and then setting the stage for the future of our community, you know, as our previous generations have done. And you know, look at history, many of you know, Mrs. Laura Watson retired from the school district a couple of years ago. She's been going through some archives of the district and kind of for the celebration that we have going on, but we've just come across a lot of great board notes and things. And so, you know, she's developed some great illustrations in our boardroom right now, talking about the challenges they had of just getting equipment and getting materials during the Great Depression as they were constructing the high school. And the board, you know, worked really diligently to keep the progress going. They talked about stopping construction in 1928, 1929, and 1930, before they finished it, to get this all done. And, you know, we talked about challenges right now, lining up with emails and fax machines. Well, everything was hand-wafted or telegrammed or crossed and getting wires crossed and materials in the wrong spot and so forth. And it's amazing how they could come up with these great solutions to give what a beautiful project in 1929, right amidst the Great Depression. So I think those are crucial conversations, and it's a fabulous part of our history to understand. To move into the next slide, you know, we talked about costs. You know, we had that COVID break in there from our community facility team meeting. And that COVID factor worked to really regenerate some ideas and kind of forced our hand a little bit. Mr. Schubing and myself, last November, when we really had a significant spike in COVID, we talked about opening the middle school, the old middle school up again and turning it into a quarantine attendance center. We had over 250 students out of the district at that time due to quarantine and other 67 staff. That was a challenging time, and we were just looking for solutions. Now luckily, we didn't have to go that direction. We took a couple of days off before Thanksgiving break, and then we were kind of able to return to some sense of normalcy. But what that did is we were moving chairs and desks around to position ourselves to make that system work. Kelly and I both looked at each other, and the square footage inside these classrooms at middle school was more than what we have at the high school. So we really felt like, man, we need to take a good solid look at this building. We went to our friends at McCollum Gordon and H2K, and Tucker did some great estimates on us. We realized how to capture 33,000 square feet again with minimal cost. These conversations drummed up even further as we started learning that we're going to get some assistance from the federal government on a COVID relief package that you can use for HVAC materials and to try to improve air quality as well as spacing students out. So we feel like we can utilize those kind of dollars to accomplish that goal and take that footprint or that square footage cost off the burden of the taxpayer that has to do that. And so we feel very fortunate to, I don't think anybody feels fortunate to be in the middle of a COVID crisis. But if we look at things right and we have the right perspective, like I illustrated with the lenses, you know, we can realize that there's some good things that can come from this, which can eliminate the idea of new building, building new. We limit the idea of having to move five and six maybe over to the elementary and doing some additional, you know, modifications to that facility. A lot of things came into play. And as we look into our next slide, you know, we tried, worked really hard on putting together a process. You know, I think when we came in, we had a bunch of different folks from, I guess, corporate executives and self-employed contractors, middle managers, farmers, school administrators. Everybody had a different perspective on what we're doing. The challenge with putting those perspectives together is we didn't really know each other. Once we sat down and started having some conversations, I had in my mind that we probably needed to try to build something new. I think you'll probably talk to a couple of our community members tonight that probably felt very similar to the same way. There's, there's just too many challenges with too many steps and too many ADA components and asbestos and those kind of pieces. As we sat down and talked and we kind of came to a shared vision, you know, the concept really was realized that, you know, an 80 million or a $90 million structure was not going to be in the cards for this tax base. So we had to all work together to figure out, okay, what could we live with and what would work? But we had to utilize the value system of all those different folks from, maybe a corporate executive that has never visited a garage sale in his life compared to that of an hourly wage earner, you know, that spends a lot of time on weekends going to garage sales. And it's not, neither's bad nor good, but it's a perspective. And these folks worked together and they sat down and they ate together, and we had field trips together. We drove a bus to Salina and toured some other facilities. Getting to know each other and getting these diverse people together on the same page requires them to spend some time together and do that. The challenge we see on Facebook is there's just bantering and a lot of negativity. When we put people in the room at the same time with the same common goal to try to improve something, great things happen. And I think the other piece of that team was, you know, was formed obviously clear back in 2019, but I utilized that team. Many of you were a part of that team as we started trying to figure out a way to mitigate challenges with COVID. We sat down, we talked about masks, and we talked about, which we may do again, talked about masks. We talked about quarantine procedures. We talked about a lot of different things, which gave us an opportunity to, again, build relationships together for the same common goal. And as we move into our next slide, I think it's really important that we understand and the community understand cost was a factor. That's why this plan before you is a modest one, is the same one we showed you about a month ago. We focused on our needs at hand. We focused on the needs of our ADA. We focused on our science labs. We focused on accessibility. We focused on the restarting the clock of that facility and the safety and the security and the technology pieces that all fit into this. Simple things like drilling a hole through to run a CAT 6 cable into a 1929 structure, we run into asbestos. And then there's a challenge, simple things like moving a drinking fountain. We get into asbestos within the pipe. We run into just a number of challenges or trying to just put a sleeve on an old steel pipe that continues to break further down. So just a simple drain pipe and a drinking fountain becomes a two-week project rather than a 10-minute project. So we really focused on, we need to focus on the electrical side. Chief Austin knows all too well that we have extension cords running all through that building. And we continue to try to, we try to work with him and meet our fire inspection needs, but that's a huge challenge. Limited panel space makes a big challenge of that. And then obviously air quality. Air quality has been a huge concern of everybody over the last 18 months. We were able to accomplish that in our elementary school with an updated HVAC system. We're unable to really manipulate to bring in additional outside air with our current HVAC system at the high school. So those are, those are the crucial pieces of the puzzle that all play into this conversation. And then as we move into our next slide, this is where obviously a lot of conversations over the last 11 years stop. Because when you see the mill levy impact, nobody likes to pay taxes, and we realize that. And we realize that this is a huge ask of our community members. But we also realize that there's a cost. By doing something, there's a cost of 48.5 million. For not doing something, there is also a cost. I don't think we can define that cost specifically, but we know that money is never cheaper than it is right now with interest rates. So we feel like we have a pocket of time and opportunity here to make the least impact we can on our tax base. And that's why we come before you today with this current proposal, which is outlined very similar to what you saw a month ago. One change is, is like we talked about with the facility committee, that 6% state aid was 13 last year. So again, state aid did decrease with a nice little, with a low interest rate. We've been able to absorb a little bit of that, but we're still approaching, you know, that 1259 per month for a $100,000 homeowner on the property side, on the property tax side. And that does include the 1% sales tax piece. So, you know, we come before you today with that proposal to facilitate and work with you together to accomplish our goals of not only the USD 333 community, but our Concordia community as a whole. I think I have one more slide on there. You know, I think the piece that I want to maybe send home to you as well is never forget that every child is someone's whole world. And it's really easy for many of us that are very blessed that have, you know, family connections or families that have the resources at home to take care of our kids and do what we need to do. Some of those folks that may have a child that has a specialty, whether that be a behavior need, whether that be a wheelchair issue or a full-time nurse or some other kind of ailments. And it's very difficult to get through that building. And it doesn't matter until it matters. And, you know, it's very difficult being in my position to look at that family as they walk into a basketball game to watch their grandson or their granddaughter. And they ask me where, you know, where the elevator is to the old gym. And I tell them, well, there's a way to get it. We're compliant, but by the way, you're going to have to walk all the way down. You're going to have to get two other administrators to key in and walk through something. It's about a 15-minute process to get somebody up and around and into that spot. Typically, some of these folks that are showing up are showing up right at game time, and they don't want to burden anybody. They always, they already feel like a burden to their family because they're trying to get to this ballgame. And then all of a sudden, our administrative team or our folks that are helping are scrambling to try to do our very best and get toilet paper in the bathrooms and this. And so they're scrambling and trying to do their very best. But, you know, looking at that face of that grandpa that just feels so bad that he's burdening us to try to get around. That's, that's something that I don't feel accommodating. And I want to be accommodating, you know, as a school administrator, as a school, as a school leader. So those are the pieces, and that doesn't account for the child or two or three that we have into our middle school right now that are going to have a really hard time getting to the restroom throughout that building. And again, we're going to be compliant. We are compliant. But it is good enough, good enough. I guess that's my piece. For our children, good enough is never good enough for me. And so I'm always going to want to push to try to do the best we can for our students. And, you know, my role obviously is to look out for the taxpayer, but my role is an advocate for our kids. And so that's why I'm so passionate about this process. And I, you know, I do have, we formed a great community facility team that is a great scope of our community. It's not, you know, it's not all corporate executives. It's not all school administrators. It's not all school teachers. It's not all higher income earners. It's a wide variety of folks, and it's a wide variety of folks that don't see eye to eye with me, to be honest. Some of them challenge this, and that's good because it made us better. So I hope you consider that. I did, I did ask a couple of our community members to attend, and I have support members here if they would like to say anything. But Jeff was so gracious when I talked to him this morning that he would come in and say a couple of words just about our process and how it went for him, and I'll turn over to Jeff.
Well, I guess for those of you that know me, I, you don't need an introduction, but for those of you that don't, my name is Jeff Wurdean. I've been a private contractor in town for 32 years. This process was the first time I was involved. I was here when the elementary school was voted on and established. And just being started in the community, I don't remember any of this involvement and asking opinions and stuff. I think he would probably agree on some of the things at these community meetings that I didn't always necessarily agree with. And there were things that maybe I still know. But the reality of the situation is at some point, we've got to do something, you know? I guess I liken it to that I've spent 32 years making a living selling something that people didn't necessarily need, but they wanted, and that was a pretty easy job. Right now, Quentin's tasked with the job of selling something that everybody needs, but nobody wants to pay for it. And one of the tools to make this more affordable to the community would be a sales tax option for us. And, you know, while a lot of the things we don't agree about, at some point, you can only kick the can so far down the road before it starts tossing us substantially more than this dollar amount. I hate paying taxes as much as the next guy, maybe even more. But at some point, even in business, when, when the equipment wears out, it's broken down, you need to repair or replace. And in this situation, we're going to do it, we'd like to do a little of both. And I think with this, the sales tax option and then being able to spread some of that cost out through the communities that utilize our retail situation, you know, it helps spread that cost out. We can get Bell Dell to help pay for, Lloyd to help pay for, Jewel, all those little communities. So like I said, I would, I would hope that we could get some support here tonight for something like this and proceed down the road, you know? I can stand here too and tell you that my son's graduated out of here. My daughter will graduate this year with any luck. You know, and so in reality, I'll have no ties. So I can stand here and tell you, it doesn't make any difference to me whether you do or don't do this. As somebody who's a little bit involved in the community and understands kids and has volunteered in multiple things in this town as far as coaching, we've got to keep our youth active. And the changes that he's seen coming in education, I have seen in my industry, you know? I think those changes need to really be addressed as far as the change in occupations, the change in, you know, it used to be when I was started in, when I was in high school, we started out, it was geared strictly to moving you to college. And boy, if you didn't go to college, there was no life for you. You were just a goner. We've come to the realization that not everybody can go to college. Not everybody wants to go to college. Doesn't make anybody less intelligent or more intelligent. It just simply means that, look, guys, we have different avenues that everybody needs to go down to provide all of us the standard of living we want, whether it's the plumber or the guy running the tractor or the school administrator or the city attorney, you know? That's the big task at hand. And I think there's no way for us to be able to see into the future. None of us have a little crystal ball and say, is this going to be the facility that's the magic potion for all of us? But I really think it's one of the, I think it's a step in the right direction. Will it be the last change that ever needs to be done? Probably not, you know? But hopefully, if we can do something like this with the sales tax and make the tax burden to the homeowner and to the property owner a little bit more palatable, hopefully we can help everybody out. Yes, that's about all I have.
Any questions for?
Yes, you want to just make real clear what your formal ask is for this evening of the commission?
The formal ask would be at your next regularly scheduled mission meeting, you'd approve a resolution to support a 1% sales tax for an educational purpose. It will be classified as a general purpose sales tax, but it would be classified as a general, as an educational sales tax. And of course, that would be for the length of the bond, which is 30 years. And in that bond language, which we should have in the next couple of days, will be mutually exclusive. I think that's the word. So if one passes.
So if one passes, if one doesn't pass, then both fail, so to speak. So I think we spoke pretty sensibly about that in our our planning session. That would be the formal act with a one percent sales tax for educational sales tax for good years.
And and maybe more specifically, Quentin, it would it would not necessarily be our specific support of of that, but rather the the support to place that on the ballot so that it'll be up for election in November, correct?
Correct.
So so the support then, the decision then would ultimately be whether whether the commission supports this being placed on a ballot or not, rather than whether we are approving the project or not, which I think is an important distinction we made. I think certainly when we met and and discussed community needs and and the benefits there, healthcare was identified as the as the the first and and close behind that was education. So I think as a community, we we've identified the need to improve. And and that is a priority for our community. But I think the specific vote for the commission is to make sure that it 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 does or does not move forward on the ballot, right?
Correct.
And am I also correct in understanding that asking the question to be on the ballot such that that one percent sales tax would be split, or ninety percent would go towards retiring the debt of the school bonds, that's the educational portion? And then ten percent would be retained with the city for what the commission would choose. We'll have to specify that. If you choose to go forward with the ballot question, it'll have to be specified on the ballot question what that's used for.
Let me understand that. So we would have to specify, like at our next meeting, how to use that money.
And and it could be as broad as saying infrastructure could be a specific, that was a specific street project, for example. So we would probably need to take some time to discuss that, to make sure that that language is is ready to go for us.
I do have a list of questions. Just first of all, I never did get my list of people that were on your committee. But I understand you had committee members that do not live in our district.
Yeah, there were, yeah, there were a couple.
I have a little problem with people deciding to raise our taxes when they don't live in the district. Just as thought.
They're employed by our community is also the other piece of the equation.
Yeah, I understand that. But the fact that they aren't going to pay property tax unless they own farmland or something happens to be in the district. But they're still deciding our taxes. I have a little trouble with that. The cost of construction now, you know, supplies are high, school formula is going down, obviously, from thirteen to six. I know when we built the elementary building, it was forty.
Forty, right?
Forty nine. I have to be on the school board through that. So I know what you're going through convincing people. And I've had people tell me that, you know, we don't, they don't always get their supplies in the classroom. I have a little trouble if we can't get books for our students, or I know they have iPads. But sometimes you need a book. And if the teacher's standing up there reading the book to a classroom during class because she doesn't have enough here, she doesn't have enough books to give out to the kids, a novel or whatever. Seems like maybe our priorities are more on sports and athletics than they are sometimes on the educational, the real educational aspect. I know sports are important. I'm not going to argue with her. But I think facility wise, we need to really be thinking about the size of the classrooms, the availability to get there. And I know that buildings, my father in law was in the first graduating class of that building. So it's it's been around a long time. And of course, my, uh, there, thirty some years. But and then I I have a little trouble right now with this pandemic we're in and still in and people losing jobs and being on fixed incomes. I don't know how many people on a fixed income retired person that's on a fixed income were on your committee. But there's a lot of them in the community. And they, if they own any property at all, that they're trying to keep. It's going to be hard on them. Because when you only get so much money, and I'm we're fortunate, you know, but not everybody's that way. And also note that we've had businesses that wouldn't weren't encouraged to move to Concordia with a business because our sale, our taxes are so high. And we're adding more taxes to them so that that's a concern. And also, what it's, I didn't see on your list about businesses, if you own a business, what they're going to do to your tax rate? You know, just some things that I think people need to know. What what's happening? And I think people are really need to know what the one percent sales tax does to the city's ability to add a sales tax.
In terms of projects moving forward?
Yeah. I mean, it ties ties up, ties it up for thirty years. You know, when we tried to do like when the when we were voting on the hospital at the most recent time, we were suggesting a ten percent or one cent sales tax, I believe, I can't remember for sure now. But it was a special sales tax to last ten years. It was a special sales tax. It was a different class of sales tax. So, I mean, is in ten years is a lot different than thirty years. Is, was there any consideration of a shorter term? Because it does tie the city's hands, potentially.
Absolutely. And and the way the math works and Dustin's not here tonight to to talk through that, but he is a bond counsel for for Amy as well. But the conversation is is just a tipping point from a scale perspective. So the less sales tax revenue you have, that means the the property tax mill rate is up. So the balancing act we're trying to work out here is is trying to keep the mill rate something manageable. And, you know, if if there's no, and we don't have that slide handy, but there's no sales tax involved. I mean, we're we're pushing probably another fifteen mils.
An additional fifteen mils on top of a thirteen point, thirteen.
Twenty seven, twenty eight was the number that was defined on.
Twenty seven, twenty.
Yeah, just shy of thirty now with the reconfiguration of lots of state aid. So yes, I mean, that that is certainly a possibility, but that that makes the that makes the mill rate rise substantially.
One other question that I have. Surely, the state is going to start helping districts more than they are now. I mean, because they have a history of doing that. So that's what I would expect. If we do this now, is there any chance that, I mean, are you locked in? Is there any way that they could pony up some money in the future?
Now, that's a loaded question. The last three years, I've advocated to start now. I've been in front of the Senate Education Committee and the House Education Committee fifteen times. And really, Senator Baumgartner, I thought we only had locked in and then COVID hit it. The challenge with that conversation is is my presentation on that with all my figures and and research that I've done, it was a revenue mutual rate. So essentially, the the revenue was going to be the same. So the state wasn't going to, it wasn't going to cost any more money to start now, so to speak, back in twenty twenty nineteen. My my charge will change and if this bond can go through, because I'll I'll continue to advocate for that. The state's asked me to advocate for that, so I'll continue to do that. You know, I I still think my figures again will be challenged pretty significantly by Mr. Masterson probably and 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 several other of the centers from the east side. But that would be challenged. But my figure showed that with the reduction and a majority of schools, I think thirty nine schools I know of right now refinanced their bonds, that they already, that they already issued. So I still show actually just a a small increase in in revenue that would cost the state if we were to retroactively go back to twenty fifteen where it should have been fixed, or twenty sixteen where it should have been fixed on the first, in the first place. So I think I have a substantial chance to do that, to make it go back to the twenty sixteen law. The challenge is in Topeka, they're going to play the game that I've been playing for the last two years, trying to advocate to start now because of the revenue mutual. Does that make sense when I get into part of the weeds?
So we hope so, we don't know.
Yeah, so it's kind of a crapshoot.
And what we came to an conclusion with with Tucker and 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 really our full team of of community members is when is when's the best time? And as we continue to evaluate, all the variables that continue to change, whether it be state aid or interest rates or price of construction costs, are they going to continue to rise, are they going to continue to go down? Really, I I mean, if you look at a lot of the charts that that Tucker has provided for us for, for, you know, estimation, you know, we went so long in the construction world without inflation, and I don't want to misspeak on this, but we went a long time without. So, you know, if if you look at data over a ten to fifteen year period, we're actually just catching what's happened is we're all calling it a COVID charge or whatever that is, but really, we just caught up to what that inflation would have been anyway. So it's very similar to that. So, you know, I don't anticipate costs going down. You know, they might not rise at the at the distinct pace they're going now, but I think they will continue to rise and then match up with inflation. Now, interest rates may play a game in that, labor will play play into that. There's a lot of variables in that, you know, I think Jeff hit on it very well. We all had it, we all had the magic crystal ball, it'd be a lot easier to make decisions. But we all struggle with that daily and leadership of trying to anticipate and make the best decision you can. So end of the day, we work with it with the data that we have and make the best decision we can at the time. Very good point, Bill.
I think there's there's a real little challenge in trying to anticipate. We have, we have low, I I don't, I don't know, has there ever been lower state aid than there is at six percent? So I mean, really.
Often in Concordia.
Neither here nor there, but we have, we have essentially record low state aid, but we also have record low interest rates. Where's the the balance of our of our state aid increases? But our interest rates increase, does that? And and that's kind of the question, I guess, the the thought that's been in my mind is that it that it would, it absolutely would have some effect, but would it be a substantial effect? We, oh, wait five years until we get state aid back to where it should be, and they're going to fund us at that. But now interest rates are back seven percent as opposed to where they are now, does that? And and I don't anticipate construction materials, labor decreasing. And I don't know how interest rates get lower without going into a negative rate and then what I've kind of told society starts crashing at that point. What about that? Nineteen twenty nine shell still. Other questions for my very last presentation? Certainly appreciate your attendance this evening, appreciate the board being here and community members being here. And now, as a member of the committee, there was a lot of conversation and I think, you know, we've we've disagreed at different points in time too. So it was not a, it was, there were no conversations without conflict, no conversations without without back and forth as far as whether it was as fully packed with different demographics, more shy. Question with with that, certainly appreciate that. But it was, there were a lot of questions, there were a lot of challenges. So it's it's been a very discussed project, our next steps, it sounds like. Any other question?
So the next meeting then will have an action item for you to either approve or not approve a resolution to put the question, sales tax question on the ballot.
And before we do that, then do we need to figure out what we're going to do with the city's ten percent? I'm assuming that it's you and your committee, your department heads are already discussing those.
So we'll, we'll have that and we can put that under a discussion item ahead of time, if that's okay with you guys. Make sure we have that. Be able to have that on the on the end, on the agenda. We can change on the fly, we can change on the fly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everyone's very welcome to stay. Wouldn't blame you if you decided to scoot either. At this point, we'll move on to the twenty twenty two budget public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there any public that would like to make any comments regarding two thousand twenty two budget? Hearing none, seeing none. This time, the public hearing is now closed. At this point, we'll move on to public comments. Time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, be respectful, and limit your comments to three minutes. Hearing none, seeing none. At this point, we'll move on to our action agenda for the evening. We will move on to the special meeting minutes of July twelfth and July thirteenth, two thousand twenty one meeting.
I move to approve the special meeting minutes from July twelfth and thirteenth.
One thing, I do need to note that Commissioner Wentz was not present on the thirteenth. So you could make your motion as amended.
I move to approve the special meeting minutes from July twelfth and thirteenth.
So moved by Commissioner Belt and second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve the amended minutes, meeting minutes of July twelfth and thirteenth meeting, two thousand twenty one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting, July seventh and twenty first.
You need to approve the regular meeting minutes of July seventh and twenty first.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Belt and second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the regular meeting minutes, July seventh and July twenty first, two thousand twenty one meeting, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to appropriation ordinance number thirteen.
I have a quick question. I don't know if it was thirteen or fourteen, but it it looks like we're paying a private person to do cleaning, but there was also service master. Was this a one time thing or are they pitching?
Service master for the police department.
Oh, okay.
At this point, entertain a motion to approve appropriation ordinance number thirteen.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number thirteen.
So moved by Commissioner Hatch and second by Commissioner Belt to approve appropriation ordinance number thirteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number fourteen.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number fourteen.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve appropriation ordinance number fourteen. Is there any further discussion? It's been moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve appropriation ordinance number fourteen, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to the funding portion of dispatch radio console.
Commissioner James Goleman's here to kind of report on that and refer to us in here and call in other committee members, so lots of people available for questions.
Hi, James Goleman, emergency manager for Cloud County. And we last visited with you guys in February. At that time, the communication team was going to put a, put the emergency responders on a digital platform to enhance our communication. There are dead spots in the county that responders can't get back to dispatch or communicate with each other. During that time, we've had several, several meetings and applied for grants through Dana Hansen Foundation. The Cloud County Community Foundation and the Wind Farm Project, or the Wind Farm Grant Program. And if I'd not had, none of those entities have decided to fund any of the costs of the project. Recently, the Cloud County Board of Commissioners approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go toward the projects. You see in American Rescue Fund plans that the county has received. The total cost of the project is a little over two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. What we're asking for tonight is. For the commission to approve forty percent cost of the dispatch console. The Cloud County Commissioners with that hundred and fifty thousand dollars had allocated parts of it to go toward fiber optic cable. Toward digital repeaters, which is a big part of getting our system on a digital platform. And then the remainder of that balance going toward funding the dispatch console. As we talked about when we visited before, the dispatch console is twenty-two years old. And has outdated equipment that is difficult, if not impossible, to repair if it were to go down. So tonight we're asking the commissioners to fund forty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents to go toward the cost of the dispatch console. We're also getting other entities in the, in the county to look at replacing radios so that everyone is on a digital system. What, these guys can speak to it much more better than I can, but if, if, if everyone doesn't have a digital radio, but we have digital repeaters. Then it's really not doing the work, everyone has to have a digital radio to go with the digital repeater. What the fiber optic cable will do is connect all those repeaters through internet. So that if a responder is in one part of the county wanting to talk to a responder in another part of the county, they don't have to switch stations, they just can talk interop, interopally. I think. That was the, the total cost of the, like I said, the total cost is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand and we're not quite there, but we're getting, we're hoping to get there. We've been meeting together for about six months. And just getting the dispatch console, it's probably the most important part of getting the system up. Along with the digital repeaters, without those two things, we're going to continue to experience the same issues that we've had, which is. Responders not being able to communicate back with dispatch in certain areas. And statistically, Concordia respond, has about fifty-five percent of the nine-one-one calls. The sheriff's department has forty-three percent. And then Glasgow, Clyde, Jamestown, Millville have about the remaining two percent of the calls for nine-one-one. Any questions?
How would we pay for this?
Couple of different options. Steph recommended looking at the ARPA funds from what we've been reading, it looks like we can easily fund it through that. When we talked last month, you had talked about allocating those funds for a portion of the downtown alley project, the sanitary sewer portion. Doing a portion for a map amendment, if we can use that through the pilot watershed project. Using it for some future sanitary sewer and water main project replacements. And reserving some for possible essential employee premium paying in the future. So we could reallocate some of those funds toward this. The reason that I asked James to come in and speak tonight was because if you did not want to use ARPA funds. I guess you have another option to, today we received, or this week we received information from the league, they created a revenue loss calculator to go along with the ARPA funds. And Amber plugged in our numbers to that and the feds assume that your revenue is going to grow four point one percent a year. Ours did not grow, and so therefore it counted as a revenue loss. So we could use up to three hundred and nine thousand dollars of ARPA funds as revenue loss funds. So if we didn't feel comfortable using the ARPA funds directly as a COVID mitigation or COVID response strategy, which is the category would fit in. We could use those funds under revenue loss and then pay for it out of the general fund after that, does that make sense? It'd be a two-step process instead of a one-step. The reason I asked them to come speak tonight was because if you did not want to reallocate the ARPA funds and you'd rather use it out of our regular budget. Amber confirmed we could use it out of equipment reserve and delay purchases. If you didn't want to delay purchases, then it would require a budget amendment and some different transfer rounds. So that's why we wanted you, wanted you to hear about this and be aware of it before we pass the budget tonight, so we knew which direction to head. But we do have some, some options available for us.
Great, I agree.
I, I, I agree, my, my question would be, does it? If we, if we don't use that revenue loss, which is that, would that also fall under the umbrella of ARP funds or is that a different?
So we take the three hundred and nine thousand out of the ARP bucket under the subcategory of revenue loss. We put it into our general fund bucket and then we can pay the bill for the dispatch console. Or we could pay ARP bucket subcategory COVID mitigation and response and pay directly out of that.
How do we maximize our utilization of ARP funds?
Either way.
Okay.
Anyway.
Literally six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Yeah, it's, it's just a comfort level with the justification piece on it.
And there's not, it doesn't sound like there's really an issue justifying this under either category.
Either way, it's fine. My message is I feel confident, we have two ways to use ARP funds for this, I feel confident.
My preference would be for the simplest of the two options than with the ARP funds. The most simple.
We'll make it work.
Except one is correct and one is not.
So we're talking about forty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Yes, yeah, which is ultimately still less than what we had been concerned about being able to fund, knowing that it's worth a lot of project.
Right, and important, I would say, very important. Get that going.
Yeah, we, when we talk to our people that do the radios, they're concerned because they would have to go to. Some surrounding counties have kind of updated their stuff, but kind of put their old stuff in the closet, basically. And that's where they would have to go dig in if we needed it quickly.
So where do you plan on getting the rest of the money?
So the hundred and fifty thousand that the county commissioner has allocated. Were, were, that's going to put in all the repeaters that we need. And then we're going to go back to them with an ask again, because if, if the radios are not digital. Then it doesn't matter whether you have digital repeaters or not, it's, it's not going to work like it's supposed to work. So we're going to go back to an ask with the commissioners, the fiber optic cable, while would be kind of like the icing on the cake. It's not needed for the digital repeaters to work, it's just needed so that you can communicate with each other without switching stations. But it doesn't, does interfere with the digital quality of the communication. So if, if that has to be the last part of it, we, we, we can move that out or not go with that part of it. But the rest of the funds, we're going to go back and ask the entities. To put in something for the digital radios, because we've, we've had some responders that have, you know, kept up the equipment and upgraded. And then some of the volunteer agencies just don't have the funding to do it. So this is an opportunity, I think, to get digital radios from everybody and get us all on the same page. So. I think with, with this, other cities getting the ARP funds, we're going to go back and ask for some versions of something.
So you're anticipating that that's how they're going to pay for it, probably?
Yes, we're going to have to go back and ask for whatever we don't get funded, whatever we can get funded through what the county has done. And then the one you guys are putting toward dispatch. And go back and try to get, the, the radios are, you know, the major component of, of the equipment, because again, if the entities don't have digital radios and the digital repeaters are. Matter.
So do any of them have digital radios?
Like Concordia, Miltonville has some, Glasgow, Clyde, Jamestown, little, but not, not. They either have like a handheld or, or something in their vehicle, but not both pieces of equipment. So if they have pieces of it, we're just trying to get the complete package. And then, and then have those guys, the other entities, get all the new equipment and then say, you know. From this point forward, since we've got everybody on the same page, keep up your equipment so that we're not in this situation again. Because in total, the other places that it's, it would probably be a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project or higher. If we were doing this all at once and some entities haven't, hadn't upgraded as it gone along, so.
I can just add, with the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the Cloud County Commissioners have approved for us to use for that project with the different, the allocation. And then if you approve the forty-four thousand dollars plus the change, that would be up to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which pays for almost all, if not all, of the infrastructure equipment. Take away the fiber, the fiber connectivity, just take that piece out of the equation, it will get us all infrastructure equipment and radios for the entire county to be digital. Is what it comes down to.
So if you don't get the full amount, the two hundred and whatever.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven with what the county is allocated and if we approve, it would obviously be.
We would be able to start earning equipment Monday.
Okay.
Correct.
When you look at that breakdown of everything, Concordia, Fire Department, Police Department's not on there, because we've already switched over in our hundred percent digital, both our entities. So that's why you don't see, that's listed, that was some of your question or computer when you're looking at it. We've started the process, Mellos extremely close to.
There's three big pieces, the big, the big piece is the console, which is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the city, the actual console. The other piece of that is like from Miltonville and Glasgow, for example, it's only about fifty-seven hundred dollars for our communities. We're already all digital except repeaters, that's the other piece of the puzzle. And then just the, the regular radios that, that this. That we need for the Clyde area would be the third piece of the puzzle, which there is absolutely no service, which we talked about in February. So there's three separate really pieces to that, but we are confident and we know that with the forty-four thousand dollars and the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That we will be able to purchase all the infrastructure equipment, that includes installation, configuration, all of that, so.
So then there would be no dead spots throughout our county, correct?
There, there would, technically there's always going to be dead spots, it's like a cell phone. I mean, it's like we're adding a new tower in Clyde, but yes, it does give us a lot more reliable in a larger area to, to cover some of our areas. Once we upgrade all the repeaters, that's another big huge step for the county and for some of the volunteer responders. The sheriff's department's already on digital repeaters, so they know the benefits of that. But yeah, there's lots of moving pieces.
We're hoping from a law enforcement perspective, because right now the PD and the SO are on two different frequencies, which is a, a real thing, because we can't hear each other. And we kind of walk over each other and dispatch is trying to catch all our radio traffic. We're hoping that with this, we can combine it all into one and where we can hear each other once again. Because we haven't been able to since we've been on digital.
We have lots of efficiencies that can be made across the county and across departments for sure, so, yeah.
Move to approve funding of forty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents for the city's portion of the dispatch radio console.
Second.
Good ones. It's moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Bell to approve funding of forty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars thirty-four cents for the city's portion of the dispatch radio console. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Appreciate all your work. Moving on to the approval of the two thousand twenty-two budget.
I'll just, you know, a few of the main points again. We did not require a tax rate hearing because we stayed at revenue neutral rate of fifty-seven point two eight five mil. Our transfers, I guess it was, our transfers to equipment reserve did not increase, they stayed the same as last year. Capital improvement transfers increased slightly by seven thousand dollars. Allocation to outside entities, we increased by a thousand dollars. Cloud corp payment remains the same, our budget has step increases, which are longevity pay increases and a COLA of one point two percent. Five point eight percent increase in health insurance and one point five percent increase in dental costs have, are taken fully, the increase by the city in the budget. And the library fund levy is held constant to what it was last year. Instead of staying at the revenue neutral rate that we calculated for that fund, because then they can still receive state aid. So it was just a small increase from what a revenue neutral rate would have been. The library benefit fund stayed as they requested, which was an increase of point zero eight eight mils from last year. And the guaranteed reserve and general fund at the end of the year is shown here as three hundred and fifty thousand ninety-seven dollars. But that will end the year around eight hundred thousand. So unless there are any questions, I recommend that we approve the budget.
I move to approve the two thousand twenty-two budget as presented. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hatch, approve the two thousand twenty-two budget as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-one thirty-one eighty.
Commissioners, we use the ordinance to add city park as. Along the other places in Florida, like the Broadway Plaza, this port complex to allow consumption of alcohol. This would still be controllable, our situation through City Hall, by the way they reserve, like say the shelter houses that are already being reserved for special events like. How many weddings and family gatherings, birthday parties, stuff like that. So we've talked about the city park as a whole, even more specifically for upcoming this hundred and fiftieth celebration. It was more of a special event, but we would continue to have control moving forward with the ordinance in place. You've gotten a map with your packet outlining the hundred and fiftieth cornhole tournament area. That will be roped off upon approval for the fourteenth. As the alcohol consumption area specifically, like I said, as talks in this, it's kind of grown to where we can further. Expand the situation, such as those other events going on, that's important.
Christopher, that a bit specifically, then do you have increased security?
No, it'll be roped off signs.
I just meant for fights, things like that, I mean, it's, it's been known to happen, so is there any plan? I would suggest that there's increased security around alcohol zone.
I mean, I know, I know what you're alluding to in the past experiences. I would say that this one is quite a bit different, just because of the area, you're not between two bars specifically. But personnel is always. But personnel is always struggle, especially my apartments and the area specifically, but we're kind of limited to the rope and signs.
But will you be there?
Yeah, I'll be running the whole, full tournaments, like that. We've been running, you know, specifically the cornhole stuff the past year. And specifically the groups that we have coming there is a wide range of people and we haven't had any situation. It's not a low out park scene where, you know, you're just getting obliterated. I know that's not, we're not encouraging that by any means, but as fact, it's such a sociable event. That's what it kind of come to, so, and this would really help, I say help, but there's a big difference of being allowed to and not being able to, how many people come.
Now, not opposed to it, I just think experience, we've, we've had issues if we don't have kind of one person with the necklace on who's charge of making sure people don't get past that over served limit and it's going to be hot.
We initially tried to try to get a couple vendors that more of a beer garden secluded area, a little more secluded area. Those both declined, so we're going to a kind of a broader area, more BYOB, I like the plaza. And that secluded area roped off area, I mean, so.
We're gonna have water stations set up for consumption of water, free water for people that day. So I mean, that's gonna be pretty important for me.
Good idea.
And the food truck, I mean, we have two food trucks committed to be right there with the two.
Rick, are you gonna have anybody there or is it just gonna be on a call basis?
Yeah, I've got an extra officer.
I'm working, so I'm not underage drinking too, because it's just an open area. I just want to make sure that we don't have any issues there, so.
Yeah, the best I can do is have an extra officer working that day, so.
But this will be in an ordinance that is more or less permanent. It's not just sort of a hundred.
Yeah.
Anniversary, so.
The way this is set up is that they have to come ask us permission. So at the time that they go to reserve a shelter, they can ask permission, we can approve it on. Basically, it's written in such a way that if they don't ask permission to have alcohol there, it's not allowed. And then it's also written in such a way that no matter if they ask for it or not, they can't have it at the playground and not with any heat activities. So for example, if there's a high school tennis match going on there, it's not allowed.
The only modification I would make would make it not specific, like, so we've got, we've got the Brown Brand and we've got the Plaza and City Park. It would be need to have it be that this is an option that could be applied with the same general restrictions to, to other, whether that be Second Street or Head Park areas.
So instead of moving it to City Park, you're suggesting moving it to all parks.
Yeah, it's still going through the same approval process. That would be being appropriate or not, that, that we're not, that we're not finding ourselves in two years if a, a neighborhood organization wants to put together an event that we modify this ordinance to, then now we've got the Brown Grand and the Broadway Plaza and City Park and this. And then in a few years, well, now somebody else wants to do something somewhere else, we can modify the ordinance that, that if this is a policy that we feel is working well at the locations that it currently is and the system that we have to approve or not is working and would potentially work this. That same system could be applied in other ways than we have. Broader scope.
Who's going to enforce it?
They have, they have to come and ask us. So basically, if we hear of drinking, it's not the same part, we will contact the people. So whether that would be whoever who's on duty at City Hall, it might be the police officers to come help us enforce that. We might ask park staff to help out with that, but it's the same way as others. It would be on a complete basis.
So what happens if somebody wants the shelter house? I mean, we're roping off an area, right?
For 14.
For the 14th. The Plaza is contained, the Brown Grand is contained inside. How are we gonna contain people? I mean, so they're there with their family and the kids want to go over to the playground equipment and.
My, my, my suggestion for that would be that it, it's not then the city's obligation to rope it off. The city would be in this particular case for the cornhole tournament, but it would be the applicant's demonstration that they are capable
Controlling it.
Of doing that. And if not, then that's, I mean, I, I think that, I think that you're going to have different opportunities for people to demonstrate their ability to do that or not. And if their plan appears fairly haphazard, then it doesn't, then it doesn't go through the approval process. And if it seems fairly sin contained, then I think that's, that, that can be caught in the approval process. Well, we're gonna, we've got a line of dental floss, we're gonna put it here and everything's gonna be fine. Probably not, but we have this and this structure or that structure and it's only going to be here. And if there's complaints, then we address it. If it's out of line, you can address it as. Yeah, ordinance is a consecutive.
Yeah, it's the same situation as the Plaza, there are rules, you ever something like that, that somebody walking, basically walking off with it in their hand still. I mean, it's still addressed at that situation, so you can't really, yeah, I mean, with the limited personnel or even as much personnel as you want, you know, you still can't stop every single person right then and there.
And Chris, you're anticipating, or at least for the 150th, you know, people that are participating in the cornhole tournament within this area. Or to have like, you know, like home base type thing set up too.
Yeah, that's why the, on your map, it's a little bit wider than the actual tennis courts area, being 90 plus degrees on the forecast right now and sunny. Encouraging canopies right there in that outside the fence. They're not going to go too far just because they have to be able to hear when they're up again. So it's, that's why that boundary is a little bit wider, so. Into the shaded areas.
I feel like your suggestion checked for the long term with this being an ordinance change, considering the application of a plan of how to, how to maintain that consumption within that shelter area, the designated area.
We have, just, we ran into this and kind of figured out a system at the Broadway Plaza that maybe just even you guys don't, aren't aware of, just because the committee kind of takes a look at it. But requiring a security plan, requiring a plan of how it's going to be roped off, which we have, we had gates, so that's a one thing. And then, you know, a deposit maybe even of 100 bucks or so if you're having to clean up beer bottles that are broken. And they don't clean up after themselves. Any alcohol event has to have a deposit. And which would be different for the, you know, the city doesn't pay, of course, for their own events, the deposit. But someone coming in, if that's their main goal, it's to have an event like that, it maybe make, put some money in there.
Kind of in excess of $100.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it shouldn't really be any issues on this.
Yeah, that they get a piece of paper with the rules when they come ask for permission, so they're, they're aware.
We dealt with that at the Plaza.
We're over it, yeah.
And having it be consistent with the way the Plaza handles, I think would be helpful for people too.
What happens if someone pukes or where he's on the wall? I mean, these things happen. And that's, all right.
And my experience is, I mean, like, I follow a Kansas City group, a cornhole especially specifically. And they're having a more actual bars with patio areas specifically for these kind of backyard games, if you will. So they're kind of really growing fast, so I have very rarely seen anything that you're there for that event and tied into when you're actually playing of getting those out of control.
Just that one apple, right?
And that's certainly. It's always though. Not always, but a lot of times there are those people that do get a little carried away, but, you know, looking back, it was a whole nother atmosphere next to the, that cornhole tournament that.
Again, that's not a cornhole. I mean, this opens it up for the Clashway Union to have it at the park, which is awesome, another venue or weddings. It's just those events can get out of him.
Yeah.
Yeah, like everyone.
Family reunion.
And so, so with that, then, I mean, do we, do we want to make specific modifications? Do we feel like this is with, with those amendments in place or that there's modifications that are?
Can we just add an S in Corysey Parks?
Oh, that sounds simple. Yeah.
You can just strike out the boundaries.
Yeah, you get to strike out.
And within the boundaries of what you had to strike out that.
Leaving, excluding playgrounds. And that under such terms and conditions as shall be approved by the city manager. This time I entertain a motion then.
I move to approve ordinance 2021-3180 as amended.
To move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriate, I'm sorry, approve ordinance 2021-3180 as amended. Is there any further discussion?
Can we add maybe somewhere to the glass? Well, I'm just thinking, people don't listen to the ordinances. And.
That could be on the procedures and the rules.
Because that's one of the.
They go to the playground and break their bottle and my kid goes and cuts up themselves some bottle, you know what I mean? Most, some people that have to drink it, these type of things are not responsible.
A lot of events now you see they don't allow glass or if you bring glass, it has to be put into a cup. That would probably be a good idea.
I know they've already had, which, I'm on Zoom, they've already had instances of glass in pretty much every park, so I mean, that still does happen too, but yeah, we always say the glass group.
Well, and I think that's, that's, that's part of the discussion that could take place that wouldn't necessarily maybe state by ordinance, that could be city policy.
Well, yeah, if you get a copy of what the Broadway Plaza requires, because that's one of the requirements that you can't have glass, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the amendment to the U.S. Cellular Water Tower lease agreement.
Mary Commissioners, we've been working with the cellular phone companies here for the last year to try to get some equipment relocated so that Suez can do their painting maintenance that we had contracted with them last, to do last fall. So we're a little bit behind schedule. This week we did have the company, the current company for U.S. Cellular did approve. Did go ahead and say they were going to relocate their equipment. They came to agree with us on the same rental option that we gave to Next Tech, which was to go down to $0 rent for 48 months and then it would come back up to normal rate. And that helps them to offset the cost that Suez is charging to sell companies to relocate their to relocate their, which is, which is several tens of thousands of dollars. So it's a very, very significant expense for them. The U.S. Cellular has been a good partner thus far. It is passive income for us, so we don't have to do a whole lot normally. And it, it does help to support the operating fund for, for the utilities department. So this evening we do have Ken from U.S. Cellular is on Zoom with us tonight, if you have any questions for him. But tonight we would ask that you approve the first amendment to our lease agreement, which does take that repayment down to zero for 48 months and then brings it back up. And all other language of the lease remains the same.
Is there a timeframe on there, removing their equipment so we can get to.
That's between them and Suez to get it done. And what I've shared with Jeremy is that we won't pay Suez their first installment of their maintenance contract until they get started on the project. So there's incentive there to, to get things moving. And Ken, I don't know, have you worked with, with Suez? Have they said anything about the schedule for equipment relocation?
They've only given us preliminary things and say they can't finalize it until our agreement with you is complete.
Okay, so this, this is our next step then, is to get this agreement finalized and do you work on the schedule?
Correct.
Is this agreement going to affect right away?
Yeah, yes, it was.
So if that matters, I could put it off for a year or two.
But then the rent would still start up again.
In four years, yeah.
That clock would be going as well.
Yeah.
The, the question I had is if, if we're going to be repainting them and we're on this cycle of maintenance, will we be experiencing this moving forward? Or will we be in a position where we'll have to revisit this?
No, the whole, the whole point of relocating both companies' equipment is to get it set off the tower in such a way that it won't get in the way of repainting in the future.
Okay. Other questions?
I move to approve the amendment to the U.S. COC Nebraska Kansas LLC U.S. Cellular, Cellular Water Tower and Ground Space Lees Agreement.
The move by Commissioner Hash, second by Commissioner Beldon, to approve the amendment to the U.S. COC Nebraska Kansas LLC, AKA U.S. Cellular Water Tower and Ground Space Lees Agreement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the manager's report.
Just a quick note to let you know that we did receive the first half of our ARPA funds, so the $178,000 in our bank account. Was it this week or last week? Last week, I believe. And then the time capsule, the 150th committee met this week and we kind of confirmed that we think that people are going to be very excited to see the contents of the old time capsule during the August 14th display. We see a couple of display cases here in the lobby. We have had people have come in and looked at, looked at some items already, those that we contacted, I believe, is that right, Stacy? But the contacted that have had items, we told them they can't take them until that evening of the 14th or after, because we want people to be able to see them. It does, people get excited about seeing them and want to put more things in the time capsule. We've delayed bearing the new time capsule to October 1st, which means we'll, we'll accept items up through September 28th. So if you haven't got your items to your future commissioner yet, you have until September 28th to turn that into tourism. And then Concordia Technologies will well on the cap on September 30th, so we're kind of working through the details there. And then on August 14th, just make sure you've got a calendar reminder for 5:15 on your phone or whatever you use to buzz at you so that you can, you can meet us at the East Shelter House and get ready for our skit at 5:30. It's gonna be a surprise what we're doing.
You will, you will get it ahead of time.
I want to make sure my costume is just right.
What time and what day are you gonna be in?
Saturday, August 14th, 5:15, meet at the East Shelter House. And that'll be our time capsule program, which is kind of finalizing the details of what that program is, is going to look like. If we got things done too early, you think something was wrong with me, so. Create some suspense. And that's all I have for you this evening. You have any questions?
All right, staff reports.
I was just gonna mention that finished up summer rec stuff with three of the four U.B. baseball teams making it to state, which is pretty cool. Fourth one missed it by the bottom half of the last inning, or else we would have four, we had pretty much a chance to make it all four of them. With the Chevys winning U.B. State and K team, C and B also won their state championship too. So it was a good, good finish for the Concordia rec. And fall stuff is getting ready to start next week with co-ed volleyball. And I just finalized plans with Derek Holmes and the new AD Jettish ball facilities. We are back in the gyms this fall, so we would have a full, full blown season of all red activities, so. So far, hopefully it continues.
I don't know if we knew it, no, because we didn't have a meeting last time. The hearing date for our Internet Domain proceeding is August 17th, 10 a.m. All parties have been served or noticed up by publication, so that left a little bit of time and effort, but we got that taken care of. So hopefully, I believe, by our next meeting, generally in these situations, the judge will rule at that time. So I should have some hopefully good news for you guys at the next meeting as to where that's going. And actually, nice thing was they stopped doing them again, but for a very short period of time, we had in-person continuing ed. And I went to a continuing ed and there was actually a expert there on Internet Domain, so he had the joy of speaking for an extended period of time afterwards. Because I had. So he had the joy of speaking for an extended period of time afterwards, because I had questions for him. And, um, he actually, and it was something none of us knew, was able to make the process a little bit easier uh, and save us some money by doing it in a different way essentially. But it actually helps the person in this, especially in this situation. Um, because there are certain aspects of clearing the title that eminent domain will take care of as well. So actually this will end up being pretty advantageous to our, our as well. Uh, August seventeenth, ten a.m. Hopefully at ten a.m., everything's on Teams. So there are many times where I have just, it says, you're in the waiting room and, you know, Suez is saying, I just sit in my office and wait. So kids can't do anything else. So.
Be advantageous. Are we clearing liens with county for maintenance and things like that?
Yeah, essentially what happened, yeah. And what happens in this situation and it's a something that bigger cities have started doing and it's actually, this guy's kind of helped them do it is, um, that they call them friendly eminent domain proceedings and suddenly he finds them. And what it is, is, is it is actually easier than the process of lighting title. So if you have questions to ownership, which a lot of the times, uh, comes with, you may have a, a title, uh, or a deed to the land and nobody's ever updated that deed. It's gone down the line, families have lived there, whatever. We don't know. Who may have a small ownership in it. So you have to do a quiet title proceeding. But an eminent domain proceeding quiets that title automatically as well. So once that proceeding is done, it quiets the title, puts it into the, this owner's name and then essentially shows it then to us. And then that payment is made and then there's a process afterwards for that individual. They, it's a very easy hearing that they asked for, for the judge to ask the judge to essentially say, yep, we ruled that this is, this title is quieted, it's yours. That's mine, it's yours. So, yeah.
Don't have to share it.
What's happening?
Don't have to share it.
Yes, it helps them. Yeah, it, it does. That's not something we have to do, but the guy said, you know, honestly, I always let those folks know. Just ask the judge to essentially have a little hearing where he say, this is why I should be giving it title, but quiet it anyway. It's mine. And they say, okay, then here's the order and you don't have to share it.
Any other department head? Actually.
Um, since the pool is going to be closed soon, can we get an update on what attendance look like with all the new commit? After it's done.
Um, one of my staff members did that yesterday, but I didn't look at it. Okay. So.
We can, you want us to send that out on Friday night? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, I would, I would imagine that will be pleasant.
I think so too.
Yeah, I think so too.
I don't have anything.
Uh, would just echo that. My children, my girls really enjoyed the pool. I know I even enjoyed it. I really appreciate the opportunity for morning swim. I hope that's something that we'll be able to, to continue on. I know, I know our folks enjoyed it and appreciated it. Anything else? At this point, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hash to adjourn the meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.